I know if they want a senior center and or a community center. That's where I put it.
Okay, we're gonna open the Board of Selectmen Monday, January 6th, 2020 meeting. Can we please stand to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have anyone here for public comment. Mike, can you recap and then read the warrant, if you would?
Sure. Let's see, recap of warrants, payroll warrant 20-25, bill warrant 20-25, signed by Bill at the last meeting. Motion to approve payroll warrant 20-27 in the amount of $155,182.35.
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Motion to approve bill warrant 20-27 in the amount of $1,399,090.85, which breaks down to town, $8,259.41, water and sewer, $193,933.24, payroll withholding, $48,500.28, light and bills, $240,528.97, grants revolving, $13,827.20, and the Funtucket assessment,
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor? Okay, moving on, we have the minutes, to prove the minutes for the November 25th, 2019 meeting. You get a motion, a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Extension?
Oh.
I wasn't there.
Okay. We have appointments, appoint the following residents to the newly formed dog park committee effective through June 30th, 2020. We have Carol Functions of 5 Governor's Road, Irene Stale of 6 Union Street, Joanne Smart of 25 Baltav, Jason Naves of 150 Main Street, and Daniel Vigneau of 18 Grant Now.
I'm just, I'm just for the record.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
No, as long as everybody comes close to it, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure that was.
All right.
It's written right.
Okay, anyone have anything you want to say? On behalf of this?
It's only until June of this year?
June 30th, 2020.
So they'll do all the reappointments for July 1st.
All right, thank you.
I just had a question.
Sure.
I read your minutes and I saw the discussion at the last meeting. I just was curious, did you, are you going to specify tonight the actual charge of this committee specifically, or?
It's technically in there.
Yeah.
The charge will be to explore sites within the town and bring back proposals and designs of a new dog park to the Board of Selectmen for further consideration, is what the minutes say from the last meeting.
Right, but is that going to be, so, you know, the appointment's to June 30th because that's when appointments end. Are we anticipating that this will be done by June 30th or not?
I, I mean, I don't think we have any way of knowing at this time.
Yeah, let them do their thing.
Right.
Only because we don't even have a committee yet.
Right, oh, we have, I've read their letters, we have a pretty good committee.
Well, yeah, but we haven't, we haven't.
They haven't met.
They haven't, because they haven't, they're not a committee yet until we say, you know, vote on it, and then they can meet, and then imagine they'll vote chair, vice chair, and then start to work on.
Right.
And then maybe after a couple of meetings have some kind of estimate, I don't know. I mean.
Okay, so as far as I know, you wanted to move it because it's up against the softball field, is that, I've been to the dog park, the softball field.
I think they're trying to get a better location for it where it fits the town better than where it is.
But could it still be down in the recreation area somewhere? Don't we have more land down there?
We have exhausted that, and that's what the community, the committee has been formed so they can kind of do all that exploratory work and come back to us.
We've exhausted the Pines Recreation Area? We let the lacrosse people, there's a piece of land that's nothing on it, right? I mean, I'm just saying, I think they should have all the options open in town.
So that, so maybe you weren't here that evening, so you probably didn't hear.
Right, I wasn't here.
So let me, let me kind of recap real quick. So we discussed with them, we discussed the options to go to the Pines, between the noise, the dogs, et cetera. We kind of all agreed that we'd try to find someplace out throughout the town. So we talked about strawberry fields, strawberry fields, maybe to go in on the left or the right or whatever, shorten along of that. Didn't feel too good about that because future use, it would tie up the future use, and if they were to invest money, and then we had to turn around later on, have them move again. So then we discussed getting them into a place where it's possibly they can stay, and it would be taking a good area for them to stay and not moved around. So then I had said, well, we've been trying to do something with the old Washington Water Department Highway Garage, and maybe we can do something down the backside of that. And I said I would contact the highway, the water super, discuss with him what's going on, which I did, and he is getting a hold of the DEP and the people that are involved with them, that equipment that you talked about. It's vacant equipment, and he just needed to find out what the story with that equipment was, and I hadn't heard back from him yet. And that's where we stood with it.
So I understood the problem to be just kind of that it bordered on that field and the smell was, I mean, I've been to the park, I've never really noticed there are a lot of noise with it, and the Pines is a nice, open, safe recreation area if you're going down there. If you're talking, myself personally, I wouldn't want to go like to some remote field where nobody's around, and, you know, I mean, that's not really a safe idea. So I would just like to leave all of the options open to them, that if they want to sit with the town planner and look at all the parcels that the town owns, I'd like them to have all options.
I think that's where China was left, but.
Because we, we aren't fully exhausted in the Pines Recreation Area if we decide not to let these other sports teams run all over the place there, and we try to decide to put something for our residents.
So one of the biggest, one of their, we're talking to the group that was here.
Yeah.
One of their biggest thing was, they wanted a minimum of an acre and a half to two acres because they wanted the area to do like water, like a water area, lighting. They were actually going to make it, and they had some, brought in some rough sketches of dog parks, so that's when we started looking at bigger areas. And I don't think we, that night, we definitely didn't edge it in stone for that location, but that location was kind of.
I just would like to leave all options, small and large, available to them. That's my, my personal thought. Not having been at the first meeting, I'd just like to make sure that they understand that I'm open, for me, I don't know how the rest of you feel, I'm open to them looking at that parcel next door to us as well, or anywhere else, and walking around it and getting the town planner to show them where the markers are and what's what, because, you know, like the conservation land, I guess, is not really as open to that. There was something in the paper about one of the towns around us might have to move their dog park out because of that. So, yeah, it is north end of Orlando, it was just in the paper the other day. So the land that we're already using for recreation is, is public, and people are there, and it's safe, you know, and there's bathrooms there, which is nice. So I, I personally just like to see them not have to put it in an area that's so remote that you don't feel safe. That's all, that's all I'm thinking. So if you need to make it bigger or smaller to facilitate that, I personally am open to that. I just wanted to make sure the charge allowed for that.
Okay.
That's my whole long question, is, does it allow for the Pines Recreation to be considered?
Yes. We didn't, we didn't edge anything in stone yet, that was they're gonna, once we got this committee formed, they were going to go out and look at locations, and we're going to discuss locations, and they're going to come back to us again, and we'll talk to them.
Great, that sounds wonderful. I'm all for it.
Anyone else have anything on this subject?
Yes.
I'm just glad that five people stepped up and volunteered to take on this project. I think it's a worthwhile project. I think it enhances the community. And I'm glad to see people step up and take ownership. Thank you.
So again, thank you everyone for stepping up, and, you know, I'm sure we can do something good. Hope you guys can stick with it, I think we will, and we'll be here to help you every inch of the way. So if I can get a vote, a motion.
Can I make a motion to appoint the five aforementioned residents to the Golden Dog Park Committee, I guess for lack of a better?
Second? No, second. Any further discussion? On favor? Thank you.
Do they need to get sworn in?
They do.
No, they'll have to, you'll have to get appointment letters, and then you'll go and get sworn in. You have to get an appointment letter first.
All right.
Bureaucracy, isn't it?
Okay.
Okay.
So we have the, it's not 7:30, so we're going to move on. We have discussion and possible vote. We probably should, maybe we should think of something simple we can do. Probably should wait on that a little bit, you think?
On what?
On the capital improvement submissions, everyone here.
You can start with the chief, and I can have Lynn come in, and Rennie was going to come in.
So we're going to start with discussions and possible vote on the FY 2021 capital improvement submissions. And we're going to start with Chief Gillen. Thank you for coming in, chief.
Thank you for having me. I'm here to request the new cruiser, which we've been getting for the last several years, past several chiefs. It's the only item that I'm requesting on the capital improvement this year.
Okay.
It's the truck, right?
No, I, I didn't reintroduce that request, I'm sticking with just the line cruiser.
Oh, okay.
All right, do we have to vote on these as we go, probably, right?
No, so you don't need to vote on them tonight.
Okay.
So you can vote, because you have more in the next meeting, the next round of them. So this is just if you have questions for the chief, or questions on the proposals, to get your information, and then when the time comes with the budget, you can then vote on.
No, it makes perfectly, perfectly good sense to me. We've been doing it, we might as well keep it going, and it's working, so why, why mess with it?
Yeah, it has been time tested, like I said, not only me, but the past several chiefs have done it this way, and we tried going five years, and it just seems problematic and more expensive trying to keep it together, so this last year, this is the first year I'm going back to, when I get a vehicle, I'm just going to keep it, and I, you know, I don't put a lot of miles on it, I take care of it. And I think any chief should, so it should last a long, long time. And then now we can take those four line cruisers, and we replace those every four years, and it may have a value, will save money on repairs, and I think it would just make more sense.
Does anyone, anyone else have anything for the chief?
So it's just this one, the line cruiser, and not this other?
Yes, ma'am.
So those other ones are his five-year requests?
Five years, I get it.
So the department's to submit a five-year. So there's probably a few pages before the one you're looking at, Kathy, that started his request.
Okay.
His request is for $50,936.47.
Okay.
You got it, Bill? Yeah, go ahead.
So this represents a line cruiser?
Per year.
For you, and there's nothing else on your, on your radar?
No, correct, I, I've certainly submitted, I think, all the right plans for our capital improvement, our assets, and any projections, but this year, I don't have anything else on there, and I've been doing, well, staying within budget, some of the items you might have seen in the past. I've been picking away at whether it's a small grant, or say like we're going to get all radars one year, instead of buying them all at once, I'm buying one at a time, or as we need it, and it seems to be working, so my main focus is still just the cruiser.
Great, as far as the other stuff, you know, we, Ms. Castro Nelson and I met with Congressman Moltar, Molten.
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 Before this meeting, and he talked a lot about his success with grants with fire and police. So when you get to that and you find something, we'll ring his bell.
Yes, thank you.
And see if he wants to come through for us.
Okay, great.
Specifically mentioned radios.
Yes.
Radios, radios on radios.
But, you know, gear too, I mean, hey, listen, whatever we can throw against that wall and see if we can make it stick, right?
Yeah, we're in good shape with our repeaters and our radios right now, but there's always room for improvement, and as we try to work with other departments, the fire department especially, you know, they're upgrading, there's digital, and there's a lot that we can do with equipment, but again, I feel like we're in a pretty good place right now with, with our equipment and our radios and our portables.
So other than the, other than the line cruiser, you don't see anything else in your five-year, on your plan, kind of, that might jump out at you, any infrastructure, any IT issues, things like that, that you might need to upgrade, replace?
Yes, I do have that on my plan as we look out, I can refer to it going forward, things like some of the radio console equipment in the, in the future within that time period, the repeaters. I'd have to look and see, I, I've listed everything that, I tried to, it's something that wasn't done in the past, like to list what we have for assets within the police department. And I think thanks to the past capital improvement committee and Denise, I was kind of charged with that duty to, you know, what is the town owned through their police department, and I did that, so I don't know if that's in front of you, but I could.
It's in the packet.
You know, we have, we have those pages, and you listed like how many years remain, you actually did a really good job on all the detail.
Thank you.
You filled in all the blanks, and the other thing you didn't say on some of it was the condition of it.
Of the condition of which item?
On the second, on the handle radars of 2012, so probably not good condition, huh?
Yeah, well, no, that was a good example that I, I used to be beginning, rather than put that on capital improvement, I'm already been replacing them the last couple of years, so that just didn't seem like something that I should wait and put on capital improvement, especially where we needed them, so that's why those I won't put on for the future, but I did put the life expectancy for the radars was six years for one, because I just bought it in 2019, and then the year before, so that was five years, the ones that I got then, so.
Should I continue my line of questioning? These 2007 Nissan Murano, 2007 Ford Explorer that we list as in fair condition, we be looking to replace those in the next five years, or?
I would like to, I brought that forward last year, and I just, I know with the budgets, I didn't want to push that issue, that's a desire of mine, that maybe I can find money on my own, or, and I pulled it back last year, because we have two, three vehicles that are from 2007. That Murano was a drug seizure, so it didn't cost the town anything, and it's just in rough shape, but it's just another great resource, and then we have two other SUVs that are 2007. So I wanted to get rid of all three of those, save some insurance money, and then maybe get a reliable vehicle that we could use to go out of town, we could use to tow a trailer to the range, we could use it for the emergency management. I had a whole list of ideas that a, a police service vehicle, being a pickup, would be utilized, it could be used for undercover. And again, just with funding, I, I pulled that back last year, and we're still, you know, maintaining those 2007 vehicles.
So Jeff, on that note, they, they have surplus federal government vehicles, like you're talking about a truck.
Yeah.
Have you ever looked into that? They, they're like.
Like the army vehicles and things?
Yeah, 2014, you'd have to paint them, maybe, whatever, but.
Yeah, I just thought maybe it's kind of rough, like the 2007 Ford only has like 40,000 miles on it, because we.
Some of the trucks that they have are pretty, pretty good on mileage and everything. If you're not looking to buy brand new, I mean, if you're looking to buy new.
I was thinking of a lease that I could maybe do within my budget, and again, I believe the reason I really pulled it back last year is not so much we didn't need it, it's that the town was gracious enough to give us a full-time officer, so I cut everything I could and didn't want to have a bigger budget even within capital improvement. And then this year, I just didn't bring it forward, just because I'm looking for that line cruiser again, and I still would like to maybe find money, whether it's grant money or a lease program that I could do within my budget, and not put that burden on the town to buy it, because it would be, we'd be getting two new vehicles, and I just think that's a lot, so.
If we could plan for it, that would help us. You know, if you want to put that out in 2000, in fiscal '23 or '24.
Okay.
And then, you know, it would give us a chance, looking down the road two or three years, say, okay, we need to plan for this because we know that's going to happen.
Yes.
And then we can kind of, you know, start to set aside money, or start exploring grants and things like that.
I think the grant exploration is what Congressman was.
Now, as far as the, as far as the utilities, the Ford, you switched over to the Fords, how do they run compared to the, they used to run the Dodgers, which is always problematic?
Much better.
Getting a lot of better mileage out of them, I mean, not mileage as far as miles per gallon, but value, use.
Yeah, we were having a lot of, like, more major problems, front-end, and with the Fords now, it's minor problems. It's still, like, now, I'm waiting to get rid of the one, I'm still waiting for the new cruiser, there was a problem with Ford, and I'm just putting a little bit of money into it, and we're just trying to not abuse it and use it as much as we might with the first line car out, but there's definitely a huge increase in savings compared to the, to the Dodgers. Matter of fact, with the budget, whether the finance committee accepts it or not, I haven't met with them yet, but they've actually taken $1,000 out of the repair line item for the cruisers and put it into fuel, because I'm going to need a little more fuel, I think. Sluckman Watson brought that up last year, that, you know, we got to watch the fuel, that, because I kept that level funded last year. So rather than ask the town for another $1,000, I'm taking it from, I'm able to take it from the cruiser repair line item and put it into the fuel, so that's kind of helping too, just having the Fords, that I'm not spending the money we were in the past on the Dodgers.
Great, oddly enough, the Thursday forecast was fuel to stay pretty steady throughout the year, but after Friday, all bets are off. I thank you for your time, and respect, and all my questions are done, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to follow up, because the congressman seemed, stated very specifically that there are grant funds, and they're supposed to be spread equally around the country, but that, unless we put our foot in the pond there and ask for it, we'll never know. I mean, so I, I look at some of these things and say, why shouldn't we go ahead and put in, see if we can get a grant for it, not wait till we need it absolutely, you can't wait any longer, but.
Okay.
Because he said specifically that the fire and police are one of the pots that have money in them, and if we can get anything to help with the capital, I think we should start sooner rather than later. And I don't mean to put more on you, so that if you need assistance with that or whatever, I have the contact Kelly from his office, and I can find out for you, and.
Yeah.
And start finding out whether or not these, some of these items could be grant funded.
No, I think it's a great idea, and I'm all for it, if anything, especially to save tax dollars, I mean, if there's other revenue sources that we can tap into. I can say that, you know, I have always looked at grants, and I've been pretty successful over the years with some. It seems like a lot of the more recent ones, I haven't received this information that you're talking about, but they're for cities, like they listed the last few, or the last one, they listed Springfield, Lawrence, and a couple other cities that they want the money to go to.
Well, he made a few points, he said, one is that he'll tell you right up on if he can't help you out, and two, that he's been very successful with the grants that he's gone after for now. And I guess the other, the third thing that he threw in is that if there's any regionalization involved in any of the purchasing, where it can be used regionally, that's a positive in that.
Yeah.
But that was, it's interesting that he kind of stated right up there that he does very well when he goes after for his constituency, and we've never really asked anything like that. Why not?
Yeah.
Hank? Anyone else?
Just one quick question, everything else has been asked. Of that $51,000, $12,000 of that is gear?
Yes. What I've done in the past, the reason why that, you might see that one up, is we were able to utilize a lot of the old equipment, take it out of the old and put it into the new. That's been going on so long, that equipment, some of it's like five, 10, even longer, years old, the, the lighting and some of the light switches, the technology today with the light switches and things that it can do, they're not compatible with our lights because the lights are so outdated.
They make it like that.
Yes. Not, everything's going to fit the same, because they changed the Ford in 2020, so this is my first time with a new cruiser.
New model, okay.
So some things, they said aren't going to fit like they used to, and it was pretty easy before. Some things, like say a siren, we would even replace that, or, yeah, underneath, but anything's exposed underneath, or wires, just, some stuff's just not working like it used to, so.
What, what was your request last year for that vehicle? Did we, we replaced the vehicle last year too, right?
It's the one I'm still waiting for, it's, but yes.
Do you remember what the request was for that, a monetary request? Was it about the same price?
It was probably a little less.
That was 48? Oh, yeah, I thought it was more like 47, but.
Yeah.
So that $4,000 is because of the, the design, plus all the equipment that you can't reuse?
Yes, and all of a sudden, when I asked for the price that last year, then when I went to sign on the dotted line, it had gone up a few thousand dollars, and they couldn't give me a good reason why, except that that was just a jump in the price of the, of the cruiser. So I absorbed that, that last year, but this year, now I know it, so, matter of fact, I talked to them today, and they haven't been able to give me, I was hoping they'd give me a price sooner than later. The prices you're looking at now, I got back in October.
Right.
And they told me after December, the price goes up again, so that's how they kind of surprise you, so I'm trying to be prepared for that and not have a shortfall.
They won't lock it, lock it in when you, they won't, like, when you made the deal, when they won't lock it in.
Well, because they got to lock it in, so they have to buy it.
No, no, I know, but you would think they, because he ordered the vehicle back when he did, they would lock it in for him, but they don't.
I don't know if that's only good for so long, because I.
Yeah.
When I lock it in, it's, I do it back once I get the approval from the town meeting back in May.
Right, right.
And then, so now we're talking, it could be almost a year waiting for this car, so things change, but it did, the price did go up, and, but I don't, hopefully I'm going to get it. What I'm trying to introduce for the first time to Golden is a hybrid model.
Oh, yeah.
It costs a little bit more, but the gas savings is, is huge.
Yep. Yeah, especially if you're just idling, right?
Well, that's what they do most of the times, they idle, and I think we're going to see a huge increase, and I can save a lot of fuel. I know, like, New York is a huge police department, and they just ordered a whole bunch of them, you know, so bigger police departments are trying them, but there's a backlog, and I think that's part of the problem. And I wanted to try it myself to make sure it's going to be what we need, but it's supposed to have more horsepower, more torque, but it's a small, more effective and efficient, and the gas savings is, is huge.
All set? All set? Okay, well, thank you for coming in, and.
Thank you, I appreciate it, okay.
Happy New Year, thank you for your service.
Appreciate it, thank you for your support.
Okay, so, moving on from the chief, we have the council on aging.
Good evening.
Hello there, how you doing?
Good, good, how are you?
Good.
Happy New Year to all.
Happy to you.
Happy New Year.
So your request are?
Is a council on aging van. I spoke a little bit with Denise today about an opportunity to write a grant to offset the cost of this van. There's one opportunity in the spring and another one in August. So I am going to pursue that in hopes that we can be funded. One of them requires a 20% commitment by the town, which is not unlike the grant that we wrote, actually 10 years ago, for the van we currently use, that we were able to obtain through a regional grant with fellow towns, and that was through MVRTA. So while a regional grant isn't in the offing right now, there is an opportunity through Mass Department of Transportation to write another grant. So that's, that's one option, and then we have one other. So I would like to, so I spoke with Denise just briefly about, should I withdraw my request from the queue, but I'd like to keep it in the queue in the event that our efforts to obtain a van via grant don't pan out.
Is this the same vehicle that we talked about last year?
Same one.
Take it over to the highway, let them go through it?
Right, right.
Did you ever get that done?
No, that hasn't happened yet. I've spoken actually with Rennie, and I also spoke briefly with Billy Green, and it's mostly just a matter of them squeezing us in between all the things that go on with the highway department.
Has the van gotten worse from then?
Um, no, I can't say it has. It's been minimal so far, I mean, the total expenditure so far this year has been about $1,400, but the majority of that has been gas. so far this year has been about $1,400, but the majority of that has been gas. So, you know, knock on wood, so far so good. We've had, we've had okay luck.
Okay, go ahead. Didn't we appropriate money towards that van last year?
And it was under a vehicle maintenance line item, which is new for us, yes.
Did that money go towards the van?
Yes. Well, I mean, in terms of use, as we obtain invoices, when something's repaired or if we have to have it inspected each year, blah, 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 those expenses go against that line item.
I thought we, was it 10,000?
5,000?
No, it was 5,000, was the van expense line item.
Has that all been used?
No, no. This was, the, this is a first. This is the first year that we've had this line item.
Right.
In prior years, we took it out of our revolving account. So this is the first year. So since July 1st, we've spent about $1,400 out of the 5,000. So again, that amount is mostly gas.
I thought that the, and this is over a year ago, I thought the idea was to put money into the van for repairs and maintenance to prolong it, rather than going out and buying another 50,000 or 80,000, whatever the dollar amount was for another van.
Correct, correct.
At that point in time, you're right.
But that, but that hasn't happened yet.
It hasn't happened.
It hasn't been reviewed.
So you're still waiting for an assessment of the van?
Correct.
On what needs to be repaired?
Yes.
In order to put the rest of that 3,600 toward you?
Yes.
Anything else?
Yes.
So that's where we're at right now?
Yes, yes.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Are any of these vans available off the state bid list?
If we received a van through Mass Dot, it would be that way. That's how you receive it. Correct.
But like, you've got, you've got quotes from a couple different companies here.
Because that was a private effort. That was us seeking a van separate from a grant funding opportunity.
I'm not talking about a grant. Like, there's, there's almost anything you can get off the state bid list. And I, I'm sure that there must be vans that they have that are available. You didn't look into that?
No, because what happens is, these are, these are pretty custom creations. The high and low of it. And that's pretty much how it goes with most COAs. There are a couple of companies, some of which were listed in my submissions, that handle primarily handicap lift vans. So, that's how we go about that. Now, should, should we be successful in a grant opportunity, then we would still, we'd still go through this, we'd still go through the state, as we are required by procurement laws, et cetera.
But you can, you know, I've looked at some of the items in that state bid list. You can buy anything from, from nails to
Yes.
easels and, you can buy anything.
Yes.
Anything you can think of.
True story.
Automobiles, naturally trucks. And there must be handicap vans available on that.
Could be. Is that how we receive our cruisers?
Yes.
For our highway vans?
All of our trucks come through the state bid list, or a state contract that we're part of.
I mean, you gotta obviously go through the process first. Like, you're standing there trying to go through the process, which makes sense.
Right, right.
Then once you go through that process, you get approved, then you can stop looking at the state bid list, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, right. Correct. The last time we, we purchased a van separate from any grant opportunities was like 2001. So, and that wasn't, that wasn't obtained through the state bid process.
You have any, Kathy, you go ahead.
No, I don't have, I guess, I mean, at this point, you just wanted to get your, your foothold in there and then see what's going to happen with this
Exactly.
total grant application.
Yeah, exactly.
Sounds reasonable.
In the interim, I don't know what we can do to have her, help her get that van looked at, but I don't know if you guys want to have that. It's been quite some time. It's almost been a year, but.
I think it's overdue.
I think it's overdue. I agree.
Oh, I'm sorry, interrupted you.
Go ahead.
I just, it just popped in when you said that it needed, does it need to get certified or anything every year for use, for even a lift in it? No?
No.
What it was, just to kind of recap what we're talking about.
Because it's no longer, it's no longer under the umbrella of MVRTA, so it's just under ownership of the Council on Aging.
Oh.
It just has a regular annual inspection, so like any vehicle?
Inspect the lift and everything when they do that?
Um, I think so, yes. I could be mistaken, but I think so, yes.
So it's had an annual inspection?
Yes.
It didn't fail?
But what we're seeking, what we're seeking, and I think what you were seeking, was a more detailed inspection. When you go in for a regular vehicle inspection, that's pretty much the high and low of it.
Let me just kind of, so what happened is Lynn came before us last year at the same time.
Right.
And she wanted to possibly put in for another van. And the board asked her, well, how many miles are on it, et cetera, et cetera?
Right.
And what have you. She told us all that. So we said, well, we're, at this point in time, rather than give you $5,000 toward your van for the year, rather than the 50,000, could you please take it to the highway garage and have the highway foreman, whatever you want, mechanic, whatever, take a look at it, give it a once-over. If it's not in good condition, and it doesn't make sense, and it's going to keep getting money dumped into it, then we'll look into getting another van. It sounds like that hasn't taken place yet. And that's where we're at. So she's back looking again possibly for a van, and the van didn't get the once-over yet.
So why, I guess I should turn up the ketchup. Sorry for that.
Well, because, you know, my task is to, is to maintain the van and seek funding. The task of the Board of Selectmen was to say, hey, Highway Department folks, you know, when you have an opportunity, take a look-see. I, I have no authority over another department to say, you know.
But is the van, it only has 57,000 miles, right?
No, it actually, it actually has 65,000.
65,000.
As of today.
That's not like a
It's not a lot.
Not a lot, but so what's wrong with it that needs to be replaced?
Because it's almost 10 years old now.
I saw that.
And so as time goes by, what happens is, if we can go by what happened with the prior van, and in the history of the Council on Aging, there've only been two. The first one that was purchased in '01 and this one. So, in the past, it sort of, because it's out, it has, as does other, as do other departments, miscellaneous drivers, it's not always the same driver. You know, it, where it gets rusty, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's essentially what happened with the prior van. It sort of rusted out from under us.
Oh, okay.
You know?
So we don't put this van inside and there's nowhere to store it?
Yeah, there's no, you know, no, no good spot to store it. And, you know, it's not, it's actually your task versus mine to, to say
Right. I, I agree.
folks, take a look.
I agree with what you're saying, but we're not here, we're only here every Monday, every other couple weeks, right? So maybe that was, I could have sworn that I asked to have that, maybe not, sent over, but whatever. Go ahead, Ed.
We got the Highway Superintendent here. We can get together with him, with Lynn, and I'm sure, next slide. I'm sure we can get him together with Lynn, and within the next couple of weeks, we can get that over there and gone through, as long as we don't have any, any storms. Maybe in two weeks, we can get back to with a, with a repair list, what it's going to cost. I don't see that it's that difficult. He's here. Lynn can talk to him and they can set it up.
Right.
If Lynn is looking for us to, to be the impetus to get it to him, he's here and I think he'll do it.
Excellent. And I don't want to be a nag about it. I didn't want to be like, so, Rennie, so, Rennie, you know.
So, Rennie, now that we've involved you into the conversation, just to kind of bring you back up, we're trying to bring the van over to the highway garage, to pull it inside, to give it a once-over, to say ball joints, exhaust, whatever, in the next 60 days, it's going to need this, this, and this, and this. Or, it comes out and it's a pretty good vehicle. It's going to last us five more years.
We want to do a assessment.
That's all we want to do. Okay?
I think what, what happened too, is we had a transition of Highway Department.
Yeah, we did.
Absolutely. It was, it was just really, really tricky.
Yeah.
You know? And then fall came. So, it's like, they have a lot on their plate, you know?
Okay.
Lynn, really, really quick. Other than routine and regular maintenance, approximately, how many number of days is it out of service?
Because of mechanical problems?
Yeah, the last year, how many?
Oh, probably four.
That's not too bad.
No. Seeing as we only run it four days, we're only funded for a van driver for four days a week. We're funded 26 hours a week for van drivers.
And that lasts?
So it's like 8:30 to 3:00.
So 52 weeks a year, four days a week.
Yep.
It's only been down four days. It's pretty reliable.
It is. It has been reliable. I, I have to give credit to Groveland Equipment. We call, they help, and they get us back on the road pretty promptly. John McComsky, he's been actually a treasure for us over the years, 20 years.
So, real quick, so Rennie, you understand if you can have Billy get us, someone, ask through Denise, me, you, whatever, Lynn, what's going on with it, the condition of it? It's all
I see Rennie most mornings at the crack of dawn.
An hour, hour and a half, go through it.
So that's not a problem.
Okay? That's what we're looking for.
It'll snow the next week or so, so.
All right. Okay, awesome. Anyone else have anything else for Lynn?
No, thank you very much.
So we're basically tabling this until we get the assessment?
Well, I think, yeah, well, I mean, I mean, she can still, I would think you can still press forward the way you're going.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
I don't think we need to stop it. Let her press forward the way she's going and we'll wait till we get the assessment and we'll vote for it.
Right. The
We're not voting anything tonight, anyway.
I, I see Rennie most early mornings. And so, he kindly turns the lights on for us. So, I can get together with him to, to find a time that they're open and we're open, or not open.
Perhaps give them a list, a list of what's been done on it in the last couple of years, so that, so that they know.
I can do that.
All right.
Can do.
Thank you for coming in and
Thank you.
Hopefully helped you out. So, now moving on, we have the Highway Department.
Good evening, everyone. How've you been?
Good. Good evening.
Hope we're all getting back from the holidays well in fear. And then Denise.
Denise is coming back with a new hip.
Yeah. She got the best present of all. If she get rid of her cold, she'll be fine.
All right. So, you have a budget request, and that's what we're going to hear to go over.
Okay.
I'll give you the four first, I guess.
So, what the Highway Department really would like to see, we have an aging fleet all around. But on the front and foremost is our 2005 Ford one-ton. It's, it, in my list here, it says 111,000. There's well over 120,000 miles on this vehicle. The repairs are getting to the point where it almost outweighs the worth of the vehicle. I mean, the body's rotted off of it. The frame's in rough shape. And it's, it's at this point a backup to the Highway Department. It's the least used vehicle only because of the shape of it. We plow with it minimally because of its condition. And we don't dare put a salter in anymore because the body's rotted. I think we have wooden sides on it now. We've got an inspection sticker only because of Bill Green's master craft of making that operational for the Highway Department. So we have a request for a new one-ton dump. I think my last estimate, with all the bolts, nuts, and whistles, was around 85,000. It's a complete replace.
So you're going to a F-550, not a 450 or 350?
Correct.
So you're going heavier than you've done in the past?
Yep.
Not that these guys don't understand it. So that's going to be a little heavier.
Yeah, it's a bigger truck than the, than the one we're replacing. The one we're replacing is a 450. This is a 550.
Yep.
When you put a salter and a plow and all the stuff the Highway, the heavy lift in the Highway Department does, it's, it only makes sense to, and we already have, our other Ford is a 550 as well. I think it's a 2014 that we have, if I'm correct.
Does anyone have any questions on this piece?
Well, I'm just wanting to make sure I understand which piece is which, because you guys are doing a lot of that truck talk lingo. So, I'm looking at this list here of what he currently has. Which, which truck are you replacing on there?
It's the 2005 Ford 450 dump.
Second one. Okay, so I was at the rack, the one that you said had 120,000 miles?
It stated as 111,780 right now, but there's well over 120, as we see.
Okay, so, and it calls, and you're, and that's another name for a dump truck, is what you're telling me?
Correct. One ton.
To be sure, I've got the
It's a one-ton dump.
So this one is, the one you're replacing was a one-ton dump truck too? It just had a different name?
Yep.
Okay, so that makes a little sense. And it'll plow as well?
It'll plow in the, the truck we have now, we don't have, we have a salter, but we don't put it on it.
Okay, so the current truck, wouldn't you use it for
It's basically just our backup third plow truck, because of, like I said, the lack of reliability behind it. We pour money into it every time it
Well, so you say it's a backup plow truck. Does that mean we're using it to plow every storm?
We do use it sparingly, though.
Just a
Because it's constantly breaking down.
So we're buying a new truck to replace a truck that we're not really using?
We, we use it, but like I said, it's, it's not as reliable. It's
Okay.
15 years old, basically.
So what
It was acquired in 2005, yeah, 2005. It is a 2005, so it's, it's edging on 15.
So these other dump trucks that we have, they can plow too?
Yes.
So we need to have another dump truck?
Correct.
Because, I'm just trying to understand the need. Because you just said this truck we don't use.
No, we do.
And you're buying a new truck to replace a truck you don't use?
No, we do use it. We use it
But not much.
We use it basically for plowing only, is what I'm getting at. It's used in the plowing state during the season. It's used minimally because of its, because it's gone down in its serviceability.
You understand what I'm trying to ask?
I do.
I may not be saying it well. What I'm trying to ask is, usually when someone comes, when we're on the finance board, they come, they're replacing, they're taking something that has been in service and used and putting, getting rid of it. And this truck here, you seem to be saying is mainly parked, and we're buying another one.
No, it's, it's used only sparingly because of the condition it's in. It's used every day. But what I'm getting at is, for plowing and salting, it's not used as much because of it's not reliable.
Because of the condition it's in.
It's just, yeah, it's a tolerable condition.
I know, but do we need that many trucks to plow? I'm just asking, you know what I'm saying? Do you know what I'm getting to?
Yep, I do.
Do we need that many, do we, is this a duplicate of one of the other trucks, or is this something very specific that does something the other trucks don't do?
It does the same thing all the other trucks do.
Okay.
It just, it needs to be replaced, that's all. The only reason why it's used at a limited use is because of the condition it's in.
Maybe a better question then would be, what happens if we just cross it off the list?
Then one less truck is out plowing the town of Groveland.
Okay, so
We need it.
Do we, do we have enough highway guys to drive all the trucks?
We have highway guys, we have the cemetery, and we also have part-time hires that we have that plow.
They drive our trucks?
Mm-hmm.
I must have heard that. So, so would be mainly used, it would be the plowing issue, or is there another issue if we don't buy?
Like I said, this truck goes out every day. It's, it's used every day. It's just that, basically, the ability for it is, is gone down because of the condition of the vehicle.
I guess I'm, I, you're the expert. You said sparingly and then every day, and so I get confused because it doesn't
It's used sparingly during plow season because it constantly breaks down. It's always in the shop. So when it's being, when it's broken down, it's not on the road plowing because it's broken down.
So what everyday thing would not get done if it wasn't, if it wasn't
It wouldn't be out plowing streets or salting roads.
Because the other trucks, they do that too, though, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And thank you. I think you've told me as much as you can. Thank you.
What about this 2007 Silverado pickup with 172,000 miles on it?
That is scrapped. That's scrapped.
That's not
That was Bob's old truck when I got here.
Oh, I say no more.
I believe, yeah, 172,000. That was, that was the one that, that Steve was using
Okay.
for his facilities use, but it's, it's no longer.
And if
Couldn't get an inspection sticker.
I'm not surprised. That, that was junk?
Yeah, it was kind of beat.
10 years ago.
Right.
Look, obviously, if you don't buy this, the one-ton dump here, that you'd, you'd probably have to hire a different, another private outfit to plow.
Correct.
Now, I read through all of these, and I can't find it now. One of these, this one-ton dump, does that have the scuttle on the back, or was that the Peterbilt?
This truck doesn't, the tailgate, they don't even put on it because the sides of the truck won't hold it on anymore.
Okay.
There's basically wood holding it. There's basically wood holding it.
But the, the new one, will you, will you-
The new ones have scuttles in them, all the, all the junk-
Okay, because I know there was, was on one of these, but I, now I can't find it,
Yeah, they all have scuttle chutes.
Probably was a Peterbilt?
Yep. We have three, um, six-wheel dump trucks that, they all have scuttles on them.
Okay. Uh, I, I don't, I don't have any more.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, the current 2005 vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
Is that worth anything?
Not really.
So if we buy this new 2020, 2021 vehicle, it's not worth any scrap or anything? If it's not, it's fine, I just wanted to know.
It's just, yeah, it's, I mean, it's fifteen years old, it's seen fifteen winters in, you know, constant numerous different drivers, and it's, it's really at the end, end of its service life. I mean, I have it on here as fair, but it's, I was surprised it got a sticker this. We just went through stickers, and I was amazed that it got a sticker, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there's not much value in it, like you couldn't, I don't think they would trade, I don't think they'd take it in trade. We could try, but, I mean, if they gave us-
Let's try.
If they gave us $5,000 or something-
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's a possibility.
I mean, I would take $500, open up.
That's, and you might, that might be all we get.
Better than nothing.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, so, to, it's like women's cash analysis point. You, you not using this, currently using this vehicle to plow or salt because it doesn't do the job?
It is used plowing, and like I said, it's, when it goes out plowing, it constantly comes back with either broken plow or broken, there, there are numerous issues with the truck that are ongoing. I should have brought a picture in to show you the truck, because it, it would tell you a thousand stories, it's that old.
So truck comes back, it's broken, comes back on the end of a hook, you have to hire in another contractor to do that?
It's just another contractor that goes out to do a job that a town employee could do.
Okay, I get it, thank you.
So, Randy? Not that we want to talk shop talk.
Mm-hmm.
I know the exact truck you're talking about, and probably anyone that sits here on the most critical, and it would have been nice if you brought a picture, because you wouldn't have to stand there and talk so much, you could just hold the picture up and they'd get it. But anyway, I know the truck, I know the, it, the dump body's completely rotted on it, I know out of any of your pieces of equipment you've asked tonight, I would agree 100% that truck needs to be replaced. Not only does it plow snow, because I'm here, you're right next to my shop, I know they use it in the summertime for mowing grass, they do the grass mowing, and it's used quite a bit, so, um, I definitely will agree with you there on that number. Um, I, I know the condition it's in, I know it's, it's, um, been out there and, and it's worn out.
Correct.
Yeah, you could probably try to get some money for it, you're right, probably five, $6,000 if you're lucky. People buy them for parts, you know, I don't think they're going to buy it to put it on the road, no way, it won't, I don't think it, you know, a company buying it without throwing some serious money into it, it'd go back on the road.
Correct.
That, that, you know, with, out in the commercial field, you know?
Right.
So anyway, um, to stop talking about this one, I, I'm in agreement, I know it, these guys probably don't have the privilege of knowing it, but I know the truck and I know the condition it's in.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on. So your next thing would be the-
2021 Peterbilt six-wheel dump truck, is that right?
Yep, that's-
240,124?
That's the one. So this is probably more of a three-to-five-year or two-to-four-year projection on the 2006 Peterbilt that we have. Actually, it's a 2000, it was acquired in 2005. It has about 40,000 miles. It's got extensive, um, you know, frame delamation as far as rust on the way to rot. This is the truck that, in the very first storm that we had, I think we had about 20 inches of snow, um, the main PTO line, I'm sorry, the main pump went on this truck, uh, the very first storm. It was down for approximately almost two weeks, week and a half. We got new parts, Bill put it together in a rather, um, quick fashion, but, uh, how many times we can do that, I don't know. I would say in the next, I would say after this winter, we're looking at potentially around a $20,000 to $25,000 restoration on the frame and body on this truck, minimal. That's a necessity that needs to be done to this vehicle. If you lose it to rot in the next couple of years, it won't, it will not get a, um, the CDL service inspection sticker, which it needs to operate in the state of Massachusetts. It will not pass inspection.
Go ahead.
Just so I'm clear on, on the vehicle, it's a 2016 Peterbilt 335?
No, 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 2006.
2006?
It's the 2006 335 dump, it's got-
Thirty-six thousand miles on it?
Thirty-six thousand, 608, it's about, almost closer to 40,000 right now, but yes, that's the vehicle we're talking about.
And it's rotting?
It's, it's on the, the frame rails from the power steering unit, all the way back to the rear springs, there's extensive rust, the whole line, the undercarriage, the body, same thing. There's, there's extensive rust, um, and it's gotten pretty bad over the, the last couple of years. You know, Bill Green, he, if he had the time, it's something we could potentially have him do, but the man gets pulled in so many different directions, I don't know where he'd find the time, because this is something where you've got to pull the body off, I mean, it, it's, it's an extensive job to do in-house, and rough estimations in between 13 to $20,000, depending on how aggressive we got with the restoration of this vehicle.
Right.
So-
If we got it in 2015 and you got 40,000, 40,000, you're, we're only putting on 1500
Oh, it's very low miles.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's low miles, it's not the miles that, these, these trucks, honestly, these trucks can do 300,000 miles, it's not the miles, it's just the rough winters that have, the miles are, it's, it's still, I mean, potentially breaking in for the amount of miles that are on this truck, it's not miles that are doing anything to this truck, it's the past 14 years of salt, plow.
And they're housed outside?
And they're housed outside.
Are we better off investing in a, in a building to house these things?
They do have a garage over there, they do have a garage.
Well, we have, we do have an outside garage that they do, that they will go in, but, I mean, the majority of the time is, it's spent outside, majority of it.
Okay.
I, I don't, no, I'm not good, but I'm, I'm done with my questions.
Hey, go ahead.
Well, Randy, in any of these trucks that have a sander on the back-
Yep.
And they plow, the, the sander on the back with the salt, they're all going to rust.
Constantly, yes.
And they're going to rust pretty quickly.
Correct.
The, I think the life expectancy at 200,000 miles, probably not plowing snow and probably, uh, without a sander on the back.
Correct.
Uh, and I've seen plenty of these trucks with, I've looked at them, that as soon as you put a sander on the back, they don't rot.
Absolutely, you can take the life and nearly, nearly cut it in half.
Absolutely.
If you have a salter, and, and like I said, the rough winters, you know, plows banging around, wings banging around, it's, it's a constant, that frame sees, you know, in, in 25,000 miles, you can add another 75,000 miles to it.
And without plot holes, that doesn't help either.
Right, the road conditions, all of it weighs a factor, absolutely.
Okay, I'll keep an eye on it, Denise. Um, you go ahead? No, I'm okay. Kathy, do you have any?
Um, yeah, I, again, I'm, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on trucks, but, um, I'm pretty good on finance, and, um, I guess I look at this and it says it's checked imminent need, the prior truck was not checked in imminent need. The prior truck, we bought the one before at 78,000, we're trying to go for 85. The truck that I believe you say this one's replacing, we bought at 85, and now we're going to spend 240,000. I, I'm very concerned about the escalation in cost, I'm not, maybe I'm misunderstanding something, which is perfectly fine, but tell me if I am, am I matching up these trucks correctly? So that this one is checked imminent threat to health and safety of citizens, employees, and property, I'm assuming you're more referring to the people that drive the truck, that it's an imminent threat to them? The box is on the front, I'm looking at to try and see your prioritization.
That might have been checked, um, in error on that vehicle.
And in the escalation in cost between what we paid, you know, if it's not in line with the escalation in cost on replacing that other truck?
So, the escalation in cost is a few things. Number one, the truck alone was around 130,000.
A lot.
To put a body, a salter, a wing, and a plow is right around two, I think, 220. What I'm trying to do with the new trucks is, um, is do what they call a swap loader, so you basically turn the truck into a Swiss Army knife. Instead of just being able to salt, or just being able to have a dump body, you can put, um, a VAC truck on it, you can put a clam shovel on it, it's like, it literally turns the truck into anything you want at any time. So upfront cost is around another 60 or 70,000 dollars, but it saves us from having to purchase a clam shovel truck, which, as of right now, we only use in emergency situations because the truck is a, uh, that particular truck is a 1988 truck, it's a old Chevy. That truck is used only, like I said, in emergency situations because of the condition of it. So it's, it's, this truck, that big truck is literally going to replace two vehicles, it's going to replace the clam shovel as well as that 2006 Peterbilt 335 dump.
Oh, this one here, this 199-
The clam shovel truck is obviously 1988.
That's a truck too?
I don't have to say that very much, that it's extremely old.
I'm learning a lot of new words today.
It's nearly, yeah, it's nearly unusable, that vehicle, and with our MS4 reporting, it's, it's become challenging to, to clean the catch basins in this town.
Well, I realize we're going to run out of time here, and apologize, you're, I'm, I really appreciate that you're explaining things to me, but I, yeah, sorry.
We have a hearing at 7:30 sharp.
Okay.
You can come back. But we have another minute to go. We have another minute, we have, we have to start right at 7:30.
Well, I know, it's just, I mean, guess my, my thought in overall is just that, um, probably, and I know this is your first time going through our process, our budget and our capital-
Oh, I know.
The total amount you're asking for is probably not going to be affordable-
Right.
You know, for all of them, so that, to try to understand which one is the most important and whether or not you have the ability to, um, like you were just saying, replace, take one truck to replace two or three-
Right.
Would be something that I would be very interested in hearing about.
But like I said, that, that Peterbilt is a few years down the line, I think the Ford, that truck is in the, at the point where it's, it needs to be done sooner rather than later.
Okay, so this one is not really a request for this year?
It's, it's not, it's a, it's a request for, in the, in the future.
I, I'm going to have to shut it down, but I got to stop right at 7:30.
That's fine.
So you put it on your request for this year?
I put it on my request for this year, I think I put both of them on there, because I think we talked about, depending on what our budget was going to be, we were going to do either the Ford or the Peterbilt, but-
So Kathy?
I'll also step down because we're going to have a hearing.
I'll ask if you could read the 7:30 public hearing notice, please, and-
Um, Bill, if I can just, so we have a stenographer here for Comcast, so I just wanted to make sure she settled the claims.
Okay.
The, um, public hearing.
Okay.
That should be the notice to motion into the public hearing.
Okay, so I'll say, I'll make the motion?
To enter a public hearing pursuant to-
Do you have one for the podium, is anybody speaking? What can you hear over that mic?
I should be able to, because I have one right here, I just wanted to make sure I have it right here.
I'm with Comcast.
Okay.
I'm here, I wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
It's nice to meet you.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Okay, so Kathy, um, I would like to see if I can get you to open the public hearing at 7:31.
So I'll make a mo-
Read the note, read it.
Make a motion to open the hearing at 7:31. Please take notice that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Groveland, Massachusetts, as the issuing authority for a cable television license under MEJ, MGL-C166A, will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 6, 2020, at 7:30 PM. The public hearing will be held in the main meeting room of Town Hall 183 Main Street. The purpose of the public hearing will be to determine whether to issue a cable television license to Comcast. All applications, reports, statements, and license drafts to be considered at the hearing that constitute public records under state law are available for public inspection during regular business hours and for reproduction at a reasonable fee. Members of the public are invited to attend and be heard on the topic. A, whether the current cable operator is in full compliance with it, with its currently existing cable license, and B, what are the town's future community cable-related needs per order of the Groveland Board of Selectmen.
All right, um, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of opening the meeting?
Roll call.
Roll.
Oh, sorry. Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Uh, yes, Ed?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the meeting is open. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on behalf of us? Or any input? Sure, head up to the podium.
I'm loud enough, believe me.
Bill?
It's Jennifer O'Malley, Pandora Drive. Um, I just have a question, are there other contenders, or is Comcast the only one?
Comcast is the only one as of right now that we know of, and the-
So I can, I can add to that if you want.
Sure.
I did do some research with the, um, state of Massachusetts and some of their departments, looking for other alternatives to Comcast, and there isn't any. Um, as far as high-speed internet, that's it, as far as television, it's either Comcast or DirecTV or some satellite service. Um, I did inquire with Verizon FiOS, uh, with their government liaison who actually lives in town, and the response was that once Comcast, uh, once Verizon is done building up Boston, they plan not to expand, at least for another five to 10 years. So the answer, yes, that's it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, anyone?
Oh.
Yep.
Mike Dempsey, 33 Uptack Road. First, as a member of the Groveland Conservation Commission, I would like to ask that the Board consider requiring Comcast to provide, uh, fee-free connectivity of all Comcast services at all municipal buildings requested by the town. Currently, uh, for instance, at, uh, VZ Park, we pay for two phone lines, internet service, and TV service. I know that in other towns that Comcast does provide this, uh, benefit to the town. My, uh, wife worked in, uh, Hamilton and Wenham, and in Hamilton and Wenham, Comcast provided, uh, both free, uh, TV and internet connectivity to the library where she worked. As a resident, I would like, um, the town to ask Comcast to consider unbundling cable TV channels, packages, and services. Currently, uh, if you only desire one particular channel, uh, the only way you're going to get it is to pay a very high fee by getting a particular package, whether that's sports-related or, uh, you know, any, any other channel, that you only want that one channel, you have to pay for the whole thing. In addition, uh, because of the way that Comcast has priced their options, um, if you choose to only get, um, internet service, for instance, you end up paying almost as much as getting all three, telephone, internet, and, uh, and, uh, cable TV services. So I would like it that, you know, uh, like other services provided by other providers in other towns, uh, that we have the option of unbundling those services.
Anyone else? Thanks, Mike. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Clement O'Malley, 23 Pandora Drive. Um, I've been a cable subscriber before there was Comcast, it was still Dimension over in Haverhill. Unlike some people in town, I don't have a complaint with the service, I haven't had the outages that a number of people have, um, but as Mr. Dempsey said, I want à la carte offering. I don't need QVC3 and Telemundo 2 and all these other channels that come with the bundle, I want to be able to select the ones that I do want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Hi, Elizabeth Rose, 792 Salem Street, Groveland. As a consumer now of Comcast, after leaving Comcast, going to The Dish, and coming back to Comcast because of Dish issues, I'm finding the same kind of issues with weather problems related to, um, the quality of, of the product and actually having outages. This, when I had Comcast prior to Dish, it never had outage issues. My concern at that time was the price kept going up and up and up. And I would agree with both the gentleman before me about the à la carte service. It's ridiculous for some folks here, them out there paying, and there's no interest in a lot of these channels, but you're stuck with them. And I don't care what they tell you when you go in to get your package and everything else, that this is the price. I watch those bills closely, and they sneak up. We need some oversight of that in some way, I don't know how we get it, I've been on the Cable Advisory Board, these are issues that I've thought about and that I've heard about, and it's, I think we need better service. Unfortunately, they're the only game in town, unless we go to satellite, or we start streaming or doing other things, else, and that may be what happens here.
Thank you.
I'm Inez Steele, 6 Union Street in Groveland, and I echo what everyone has said before, and I'm also very concerned seeing the prices as they go up and up and the equipment prices for Comcast. And if they are the only act in town and we have really no other choice, is there any way to have them control or promise a minimum rate hike over time? I don't, I have no idea. I'm not really sure what's on the table for us to talk about, so I thought I would put that out there because we are kind of stuck, stuck with it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, and then we can go to the board, starting with Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I can answer some of those questions. You're probably not gonna like the answers I have. I think as far as being able to specify certain channels you want and not doing the bundles, I, I believe that's an FCC federal regulation, not a local regulation. I could be wrong, but I thought someone in Maine tried to do that with their cable company and it went all the way to the FCC and the FCC said he couldn't do that. But that's just hearsay. As far as the prices, I don't know that we have any control over anything as far as pricing goes. Comcast pretty much just dictates what their packages are and we pay them or not pay them. I went through this issue with them over many years, right? And finally, I just said, I'm going to go and stream everything. And I did that for a couple of months until Comcast came back to me and said that we'll give you a sweet deal to come back to us and we'll lock you in for two years and I cut almost $100 off my bill. So I said, great, I'll come back. And then, you know, two years from now, maybe I'll go out back and I'll stream things for another couple of months and then I'll come back as a new customer and they'll give me a sweet deal and it'll be $100 less and we'll, we'll play this game and maybe I'll go to DirecTV for a couple of years and I'll come back. Unfortunately, that is the only way that I have seen to curb the increase of the bills, right? So if you don't wanna play those games, which a lot of people don't, you can just go and stream to certain channels that you want. Maybe you just want NBC and CBS and HBO, and you can do that. You have to have the high-speed internet, you have to have the equipment, you have to have a little bit of know-how how to set it up and use it and, you know, I had to teach my in-laws how to do it, that wasn't fun and easy, but we got through it. So it's something that can be done, but it does take a little bit of ingenuity and want in order to overcome some of the price increases.
Okay, Bill?
I, I think my issues are the same as Selectmen Wood. It seems that Comcast does more for the new customer than it does for the loyal customer that's been with them for 10 years, just watch the TV ads, sign up today, get two years for $29.95 and then you open your bill and you're paying $299.95 and you say, wow, I don't understand how this works. Usually, loyalty is rewarded, but for the most part, I find that loyalty is rewarded very little. They do more of before than the fellow that they've collected 12 months of checks for 20 years. So I'm a little confused on that marketing strategy, but then again, I don't run Comcast, so I guess somebody else had to explain that to me that is smarter than me because I'm just not smart enough to get that. That's it.
All right, Ed?
Yeah, a few points, and I, I agree with the rental, the rental fee for the boxes that you get, you're paying a rental fee every month. If you're, if you're a Comcast customer for a couple of years, you've paid enough to be able to buy that box. Maybe there's, there should be an option that you can buy the box instead of rent it every month. At a, at a nominal fee, at what they're gonna, at what they're going to, uh, buy it for with a little profit. And I agree as far as the unbundling of the packages, pay for, pay for what you get, what you wanna watch. And I understand the FCC regulations, but I don't think that that covers any of the expanded packages that you get. I thought that was just for, for your basic package, was that the FCC requires certain channels to be, to be covered, but I didn't realize that, and I don't think that that goes for the expanded packages for, for your sports channels that, and I agree. You, you, you want one or two channels, but you get, you get 15 or 20 others that you, that you never watch. So I agree with that. The other thing is that public access channel goes down quite often, and every time we check into it, it's Comcast's fault. Most of the time, it, very rarely is it, is it here at, at this unit or over at the police station. It's generally when we, we make the call, we, we get ahold of Chris, he contacts Comcast and it's generally always their fault. Sometimes it takes more than, more than a couple of days for them to straighten it out, but, but very rarely is it, is it us. I think that's all I got right now. Thank you.
All right, and Kathy?
Yes, I think your suggestions on asking for some form of unbundling are completely valid. I mean, this is, this is a company that has a natural monopoly and that's why they're somewhat regulated and they're supposed to be responsive to our request during the negotiations, and that is the purpose of this hearing, to be able to bring forward concerns. I've, I've done what Selectmen Wood did on one occasion, put all the equipment in a bag, dumped it on them, but then you have to go back and get, get the equipment again. It's, it's a hassle. And as far as wanting to own it, I would say no, just because technology changes so quickly, but the fees for rentals should, should not, you know, be anywhere near the cost of purchasing the equipment, so they should be nominal, they should be reasonable. And the second thing is that I've, I've heard of, I have not personally looked into it, but I will before we complete our negotiations, that there potentially is pricing disparity among, between towns around here. And that makes absolutely no sense to me, why people in one town would pay more for the same service from the same company than people in another town. And that, that would really worry me if we go into negotiation having found that that exact, that that complaint, which was given to me over the, an email, is actually valid and true. But everything you say and everything you're, you're talking about makes complete sense to me. I mean, it's, we should bring in each and every of these things and say, these are concerns, these are complaints. We want everybody to be as happy with the service as possible, given that we have only one provider.
Kathy?
Yeah, I am, thank you.
Mike, I have one more thing he wanted to say.
My mom wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Sam.
I wasn't gonna talk because I didn't wanna embarrass him.
That was the best one.
Mary Wood, 89 Gardner Street, 89 Gardner Street in Groveland. Kathleen, when you were talking about the disparity in pricing, there are people with, amongst towns, there are people within town that have the same services that are paying way different prices.
Okay.
For the same service, the same bundle package, the same everything, and they're paying different amounts. I may be paying 113, somebody else is gonna be paying 229.
It's like, it's price strategy, yeah.
For the same thing. So that's something that I think could be addressed or looked at because it, it's very common through the town. And I'm surprised that there's more people not here voicing their opinions when there's so much talk on social media about what all the issues are and all the complaints that everybody has.
Well, I think people feel honestly now that there's nothing that we can do, but we are in a position now to talk to them.
Right.
And to bring these concerns forward, and if we don't, if we don't at least get in the game, we'll never know.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to talk about the, the comments about the equipment and the cost of the equipment constantly going up. So you can mitigate that cost by eliminating cable boxes with a Roku stick or something like that, where you can stream the same channels and still use your DVR and access to DVR and, and use your TV that way by buying a Roku stick for 30 bucks and not having that monthly charge of $5 or $7 per device. So in two or three months, that pays for itself and you just use it.
Are you going to install them, Selectmen Wood?
Sure, I'll write up a document or send out a memo on how to install them. You plug it in, you'll get the Wi-Fi. There it is.
You all set, Mike?
Yep.
So I think we're good, everyone has said their part. I thank everyone for coming in and saying what they needed said. I can say that we are going to be negotiating behalf of the town, and I am going to personally, I am going to suggest that we use town council if we can. We'll, we'll talk for a while with the board and have the, possibly have town council, someone from town council represent us at that point in time. But I heard everyone, I've heard the board, and I will make sure that as long as I'm here, we'll move forward and get the best package we can possibly get. And thank you everyone for coming in.
Do we need to do a roll call to get out? So I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Okay, second?
All second.
Okay, roll call out, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Me, yes?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Okay. And meeting is closed at, I can't see.
That's closed.
Okay. Now, I get, let the poor lady get her stuff back, we gotta, does anyone wanna take a five-minute recess or?
Yeah.
Okay, take a five-minute recess while she cleans up.